I fight the diligence in the black of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We pray. Father, we thank you for this evening. We thank you for the beautiful sunshine, for all of those that are here tonight. We ask that you be with our families and our servicemen where they are, all over the world, and give us all protection. Help us to make the decisions we should make. All these things would pray.
Welcome everyone here tonight. I will entertain a motion to consider the approval of our agenda, and would ask first, I guess, are there any council introduced items that we need to add to the agenda? If not, is there a motion to approve the agenda as presented?
So moved.
Motion is second. Any other discussion? Not those in favor of 65, the same eye. On that opposed note, all members voting for the motion. Under our ten-minute public input period, we have a couple of items packed out.
Good evening, council members and mayor. Mr. Wood.
I just wanted to briefly share some exciting news on behalf of Canton Main Street Program. As you know, the Main Street Program works hard to present events for the city of Canton, and we work hard for the city of Canton in general. I also might add that we work hard on a very tight budget, but y'all know that. One of our regular events is First Friday, which we host downtown each month. Last month, we voted to schedule a concert in conjunction with First Friday, and we are proud to announce the appearance of the Fiddleheads at our August 2nd First Friday event. The Fiddleheads finished in the top 25 America's Got Talent in 2011. They've also performed at Turner Field before Braves game. They've headlined at the Kentucky Bluegrass Festival and opened for Tim McGraw in Nashville. They last performed in Canton in 2012 at the Cherokee Arts Center and sold out that concert. The Fiddleheads is a well-known, fairly local group. The guys are all graduates of North Georgia College, North Georgia State University in Agus, and they're well-known through their appearances all over the country. They're on YouTube. They have their own Facebook page. I hope you'll check them out, that you'll come August 2nd to downtown Canton as we host a concert that we're paying money for, and we're proud to have them. Thank you.
Jeremy Swett.
Good evening, Mr. Ramsay, council members, Mr. Wood. Thank you so much for the opportunity to speak for just a moment here this evening, and also thank you very much, each of you, for your service to our city and to our community as well. Wanted to just speak for just a moment regarding our conditional use permit that's before you this evening on item 17, I believe, in rural business, our conditional use permit request for community packages to meet at the mountain this Boulevard Plaza today. I believe you have access to the pact of information we filed, so I'll not repeat all that information for you this evening. But since one of the other business owners to the establishment, as Andrew Plaza spoke before you last week in opposition and raising some concerns that he had, I simply wanted to let you know the response that we had made already prior to last week's meeting with him and in front of the planning commission. That owner expressed opposition based on an anticipation of too much vehicular traffic there in the plaza, too few parking spaces as a result of activities, despite the fact that there are 93 on site. Our services are only on Sunday mornings, Wednesday nights, so I don't believe that there will be the conflict there that could possibly or may be concerned. We've introduced ourselves to the neighboring businesses. It's our desire to be a good neighbor to them. And in an effort to demonstrate that spirit during the weeks between the meeting of the zoning commission and the council meeting last week, we had approached these owners, all of them, and indicated that if they were concerned about parking issues with their establishments and with their patrons, we're willing to provide for them reserve signs during our services, times where those times would coincide, so that they would have reserved spots right in front of their businesses. We will provide those for them, maintain them for them. And so that would encourage our folks to park away from their places of business and allow that to unimpeded traffic. And so we're looking forward to the opportunity to minister and to serve in the city of Canton. We want to be good neighbor. I believe we've demonstrated that we're going to do that, and going forward, we're looking forward not only to serving the cities, citizens of Canton, but also greater Cherokee County as we take up residence here in the city. Thank you so very much.
Thank you. Okay. Under the consent agenda, I will read these two items, and if anyone wishes to pull either one off and discuss further, we'll do so. This is a second reading and action on the ordinance to authorize Cherokee County Board of Elections and registration to hold the city of Canton elections. Anyone have any questions or anything about that? If not, the item B, action on the planned documents for the city's 457 defined benefit contribution plan. If I have any questions on that? Okay. Do I have a motion? We approve the items on the consent agenda. Have a motion in a second. Any other discussion? If not, those in favor of 65, the same eye. Opposed? No. All members voting for motion. Under item 7A, reaffirmment of the current downtown development authority committee members, I am asking that we, this board, reappoint those which are up, and of course that, you have that list, Zach, Rebecca, Zach Kell, Rebecca Johnston. Who else was on that list? You get that? Sam Rogers, and maybe one more?
Just one more.
No, I don't think he's up this time. I didn't bring, I didn't bring the back up from the last meeting. You got, is it Zach Kell or Rebecca Johnston? It is Doug Keating. You're right, Zach. So those four items. Any other discussion? That's my nomination.
So moved.
A motion is second. Any other discussion? Not those in favor of 65, the same eye. Opposed? No. All members voting for the motion. Thank you. Item B, update on the street improvement program. I ask that this be put back on the agenda this week, because I want to keep this out in, out front here, because we've got a situation that we're going to have to address, and we're going to need to continue that discussion. I believe the last time we spoke, I believe Mr. Wood was going to take a look at, and continue the process where I believe we had at one time, you know, pulling all these streets together that had problems, and whether or not there was a bond on them, and if not, why not, and if the developer was still in, still active, or if it was completely gone, to try to develop some kind of plan, and then develop a program from that plan to address all these streets. And so, you have any, anything going on with that?
Yes, sir. As we mentioned last, we do have an inventory of bonds, at least as was, we were able to ascertain. We do have a recommended street resurfacing priority list that is an inventory of all of our streets. And Mr. West and Mr. Jimmy, John and me have developed that priority data. So what we would do would be to provide that data to whoever mayor and council selected to award a, an oversight or consulting contract to. But in the meantime, what we'll also be doing is developing a RFP, and I believe it was requested at the meeting last week, that we bring that RFP back to council, for y'all to look at and approve before we, before we issue it to us.
Yeah, I think, I think that's important, that we do consider that transportation plan, which will have to encompass the, all these streets and the problems, and to help us work out some sort of schedule for addressing these problems. So when, when do you think that you will bring that RFP back?
I hope we have our feel on the, August maybe?
Yes, sir.
August 1st maybe?
Yeah.
Anyone else have any time to answer questions?
Yes, sir.
Yes.
When are we going to be able to determine what streets are ours and what streets are not?
I had, I don't know if you addressed that to me or Mr. Wood or to me. I guess whoever probably.
Probably, yeah, whoever probably, Dyer probably be the final answer on that.
We, we have talked about that, and you know, it's, it's, you know, my opinion has been that once, once we've approved the set of plans, and once we have issued building permits along a pub, along a street, unless it's been designated as private, I don't know how it could be anything other than public. It'd be our responsibility. And whether or not we actually took a performance bond like we should have, it's not the homeowner's, it's not the homeowner's fault, but it's really the city's responsibility, I think, to do that. Now, that's, that's where, where I think we are. But Mr. Dyer says it's probably not quite as simple as that. But I think, I think hopefully we can get together two or three, and I think since some of the streets, particularly in your area there, we need to meet with Mr. Dyer and see if we can get some final definition there of what we need to do. But I don't, I think they're ours anyway.
The performance bond would be the contractor, the developer would demand that of the contractor who's going to build the streets. That's where the performance bond will probably be between those two parties. As far as the city, as we have discussed, that's the maintenance of it after it's built, to the city code, or the city acceptance, then the maintenance bond for a year would be between the city and the developer.
I would agree with that, one exception there. If we let, if we give out building permits in there, though, I think that payment of that performance bond's got to come to the city, because we've let people get in there and build their houses. If, if, if we didn't allow any building permits in there, I would agree with you, that it could be maybe between the developer and the contractor before he turned it over and for final inspection, and then a one-year performance, I mean, a maintenance bond after that. But.
There was, there had also been this confusion in these developments. It said that if the sellout has to be at a certain percentage, and I don't think we've ever established a percentage. It was always kind of used that if they're still bringing in heavy equipment, concrete trucks, that type of thing, tearing up the road, then they don't want to put service on it. Next thing you know, they're gone. And, and we might be at a 70 or 80% sellout, but you know, it's something that we also need to look at, that aspect of it for future. What's happened in the past, we're going to be living with that. We don't figure out what we're going to do. But we've got some that really needs to be brought forward so that we can get this resolved.
I, I think there was a, a time in which they were told that you had to build out like 80%, and you did the topic. However, I don't believe that was ever in any of our specifications or anything, from what I understand. The developer needs to finish the streets before, in my opinion, really they have to finish it before we start issuing many building permits. And then we inspect those streets. If they're acceptable, then we let them post a performance bond, you know. And for, and then a year, a year later, we go back and check it again. And if there's base fires and potholes and stuff like that, they fix all that. If they don't, then we fix it with a performance bond. But anyway, it's just one.
Just, when you start thinking about these things, you're going to be adopting a unified development code. That's going to be part of that code, is what we do with this. I, I, Mr. Patton and I have had several conversations with Mr. West, and I think what the proposal is going to be is that if you do a maintenance, you fin, make them finish the streets before, actually before final plat approval, which is what you hold over, and they can't get a building permit until the plat's approved. So you try to make them do all the infrastructure before the final plat's approved. Then it's a maintenance bond situation, but a year probably not long enough, because you, you, you're not going to sell all the houses in a year either. You know, sometimes that happens, but not. And you can take them phase by phase, and street by street, and you can do things like that. So I think that, we'll talk about maintenance bonds, and finishing the roads before final plat approval, but I think 24 months maybe will be. But those are things you'll decide as the council, how you want to do it going forward.
Mr. Mayor? Yes.
Is there something else other than just the drawings, prints of the subdivisions or the streets? Is there something writing that, that the city gets from the developer that will help us understand if they're our streets or their streets? Is there some type of documentation?
You know, my previous experience with that was, is that once, once the street has been initially accepted, or at least inspected and found to comply with the standards for, for our streets, our code, that is presented, the way it used to be, and I'm not here, but with the county, that then was presented to the council for official acceptance at that point. And, and you know, you're accepting it, the street name, and everything's on.
And, and you know, you're accepting it, the street name and everything's on it.
Mr. Mayor, one of the things that you put in place right after you took office was that the signature block that was on those plats was kind of like a rubber stamp thing and who knew what was being done? And one of the things that you said you would not sign that book signature block until every one of those other signatures had been on there and signed. And, but well, then we hit the wall. So, developing stopped basically. But that was one of the things that you realized that needed to be done to make sure that is complied to.
Right.
And I think, and that's still your policy, I would believe, because we haven't had anything really going on, but that is a key element because that's what everybody falls back to, is that plat. And the final plat was signed.
Yeah, what, what, what that certification was on, on the plat was that I was certifying that streets had been built to the spec, proper specifications and all that, code, not everything. I'm not engineer, I know where it went off. No way you could know. So it made sense, number one, for our zoning people and our engineer, our engineer's the one that should sign that it's been inspected and found to conform to the reg, to the standards that we have in our code. And as far as I know, that's still what's being done now.
The, the, the way it's supposed to work and does work is the development regulations require that the streets be dedicated by plat. And so there's language on the plat that says all streets are dedicated for public use. Legally, what that means is nobody can block those streets. That doesn't mean that cities maintain it yet. They are public streets. We didn't have to accept them in some fashion. We can have formal acceptance as the mayor described where everything went great and we liked them and they're all good streets and we say, we now accept those. And we do have a formal process for doing that, we've done some, there hasn't been any to accept. You can also accept them by implication, meaning you can take some action that makes it, that legally would make you accept them. And I think that's what, we haven't formally accepted these streets that are unfinished. So that's, we're just in this in-between time where they are public, but we haven't accepted them formally yet. But they are, but they are dedicated by the plat, but not accepted by the plat.
So who wants?
The developer.
Well, ownership is not really the issue, they're public.
Well, who pays to have them fixed?
Well, that's the question. If we have accepted it, if we have accepted it, acceptance is accepting for city maintenance.
Mr. Mayor?
So until they're accepted, who knows who's supposed to fix them?
Yeah, it's, it's been my experience that, that the, the developer, and we talked about this 80 percent build out, that's typically in the covenants of the subdivision. And the developer maintains control of the HOA until that percentage that's specified in their covenants is built out, then he turns the streets over to the HOA and at that time he releases his responsibility and that's when they come to the city for acceptance. Or not. You don't think so?
The 80 percent was a made up thing. It was never, it was never done, no, it was never done by.
I mean, it's in, it's in the HOA.
Yeah, the turnover, but that's, that's got nothing to do with whether they're maintained by the city or not. The, the 80 percent was a developer talking government into not let, not making them do something.
Right.
And, and, and having a plausible reason for it, which was, you're just going to tear up our streets and we're going to have to fix them later, don't make us spend that money. And so we said, that's okay, you don't have to do it until you solve 80 percent. But, and that's great, but we didn't get performance bonds when we did that. We went ahead and took maintenance bonds, which doesn't do you any good because the street's not finished.
And I think the dilemma that we experienced in the city is if, if the developer goes belly up and it goes back to a bank or to somebody else, then who's going to pay for those streets that are unfinished, that where they're topping? I mean, when I grew up, if the city was coming and putting curbs on your street, they, or sidewalks, they assessed every homeowner on the, on the street court. I don't know if we do that anymore.
And, and to everybody's defense, the 80 percent idea came about because the developer wasn't going anywhere. They wouldn't finish them. They wanted to build another subdivision in your city so you knew they were going to do what they were supposed to do and it just all stopped.
Well, then it gives them control of the HOA, as Mr. Huffman can attest in his subdivision.
But the HOA is never going to finish it. The, the HA would never have responsibility to pay the street. That would never be the HOA's responsibility.
Oh, it'd be the developer.
The developer.
The developer would do that.
Because of the development regulations.
Yeah, he was doing that prior to turning the, the subdivision over to the HOA. That's when he's, that's when he's supposed to have it done.
Well, he's supposed to have it done before the final plat's approved.
Well, I mean, usually like in, in our case, they don't finish the streets. They, they, they don't put the top coat on the street until all of that street is built out so they don't have to screw it up with heavy traffic on it. And we still have some, but where our streets are, are finished, now our streets are all private streets of course, but the, the streets are finished where they're built out, but, but one street is, they top coated halfway.
And you're not, in the private streets, it's the way the nature would be responsible.
Mr. Mayor? Okay. Yes, sir.
Wouldn't it be good for us to identify as soon as possible those streets where the developer still is in existence, where they haven't been finished, and take action now to force the developer to fulfill it and not give him time or continuing time to depart from our community? Now, I know where Mr. Beresford and I reside, that Wieland, who is the developer now, of course it's been several successions of who the, the, the claret or developer is, but it's now Wieland, and he is more or less pulled out of any spec development there. Now, he isn't out of business, but he has sold his business to an investment company that's in Boston and I don't know how much, they're trying to mass sell lots now. And if we just continue to lay this, they'll, they'll have sold these lots and have absolutely no concern whether or not those streets get finished. And to me, I would think until those lots are sold, if we had some mechanics to freeze, save building permits, those lots will not be very attractive to another buyer and that would sort of force them to finish the streets.
Okay, that's the same situation with Red Sky that's, the original developer is gone, new developer's in there and he's trying to mass sell lots on unfinished streets.
But I don't, I don't think we're going to solve this problem right now, to be honest with you. But I think you're absolutely right and I think the, the RFP that Mr. Wood's going to put together for a transportation consultant to come in and give us some ideas to help us develop a transportation plan and, and means of some corrective action on those streets that need it and, and schedules to do so, then I think that's, that's where we need to be. So he will be bringing that around the first meeting in August, so everyone can again to take a look at it, review it at that point and see if it says what, if it, it does what we want it to do.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
You did say that we do have some bonds that are out there.
I, I think there's some there, yeah.
Okay, we just want to make sure of that.
I know on River Green we have some.
Yeah.
Don't want them to expire.
Individual, individual streets. We.
Not good there.
Okay, let's move, let's move along here. The, we have the second reading and the action on landfill budget amendment of $120,000. This is the amendment that we had to get the additional clay saw to cover the existing old landfill there. Anybody, we talked about that at the last meeting.
Fairly in depth, I think.
So anybody have any other questions?
Yes. I don't like.
Okay. No other questions?
No other questions. We, we approved that $120,000 to move dirt from, I believe it's Carterville over here. And we did it rather quickly and I just, you feel like for $120,000, we, we had already gotten the, somewhat, some type of okay that the dirt we had was acceptable, then the EPD says it's not. Who decided that it's, was acceptable? Was it the company that is doing this and then now EPD said it's not? Whose responsibility was it? It sounded like the company that did it, approved that dirt to be responsible.
Did we buy that dirt? We didn't buy that dirt and all of it in there. No, that's correct. We did not. Our, our, the contract we had with the contractor who was completing the landfill closure assumed that the dirt we had would be the dirt that would, would be acceptable. We already, as the mayor said, already owned that dirt. Now, the, the new contract with, with the current, with the same contractor will require him to, Joby, don't let me misstate anything, my understanding is that it will require, it places onus on him to make certain that the, that the dirt is acceptable to EPD, is that correct?
Yes, sir, that's correct.
So we went through the expense of putting our dirt on top of it?
No.
Oh, they, they applied.
We put, we put a portion of our, of our dirt on it.
The only dirt they have is all the way Carterville, we got to truck it from Carterville. You want to talk to, about the detail? That's all right, Chair. You want to explain to what detail y'all have gone and trying to locate dirt sources?
Chair, thanks, and our mayor council. Yes, we, we had analyzed dirt from the law, cannon, fire station site, it's found to be too sandy. We looked, we talked with Will Banks over at the Northside Hospital site to see if they had any clay material which might be tested and be found suitable. No luck there, they turned us on to a, a fellow that, out of Carterville who capped the landfill for Cobb County and I forget the name of the, the, he put like 180,000 yards on one down there, had a big stockpile of this suitable material. Couldn't, we really couldn't work out a deal with him. This dirt we're getting now is coming from Nelson, not, it's not Carterville. Right, so we looked, we looked at several places, we contacted the Walmart, the Platinum Excavation, this grading, the Walmart site down at Agent 7. We just, we think we exhausted all of our possibilities. The contractor agrees and say there's, they can find this dirt around here, but it's in little spots, defined a couple hundred yards here and there. And we brought Stan Tech, Stan Tech was up, I think it was three or four meetings ago. I, I was not at the last meeting unfortunately, but I do know Stan Tech's up here and we, we sort of explained how we, how we came about where we're at now and what we needed to move forward.
But at that time it was coming out of Carterville, so now it's coming out of Nelson.
No, no, it was never coming out of Carterville, that was just, it was either, it was always coming from Nelson.
Question I have is Stan Tech was hired to test that dirt, were they not?
No, we're not.
No, the, the dirt that we have over there at the landfill side, for years we've known this was going to have to be capped, this is the way I've become. So as additional, as dirt became available, we would bring over our stockpile. The majority of the dirt that's stockpiled over there to be used to cap this landfill came from four or five different places.
Okay.
From probably different developers, you know, that had access. We said bring it over here, we can stockpile it and it'll benefit the city because we won't have to purge it. Well, we came to find out if it was suitable cap material.
But one of the contractors that we wrote a contract with, before he wrote that contract and put a contingency in the contract for additional dirt, wouldn't he have taken a look at that dirt to see if it was?
I think, I think, I think Mr. Cummins, that the city had that dirt that was in our possession tested. And, and that preliminary ta, or that test, wasn't preliminary, that test indicated that that section of that dirt that was tested was acceptable. The problem became there were not enough tests of our dirt to, to verify that it was more polluted than they thought that it was.
Special. Thank you. Joby, I apologize for not speaking to you earlier on this issue. We're putting in soil cement down at Park. Would soil cement cap it and solve that problem?
Well, I asked Stan Tech that same question, that's not, that's, you get into that, it's more, it's going to be more expensive, plus you're going to have that solid, that really solid cap over it and that's going, then you have to vent, you have to do a vent system to get them that thing high from under, all of that. So, no, that, we, we tried that too.
Okay. Okay, we, anyone else have a question here?
So if we, if we are, if, if, the gentleman that came up here said it's coming out of Carterville's $120,000.
No, sorry. He.
That was Burke Murphy, he did not say it was Carterville. If he did, I apologize for, for disputing, but he, he said Nelson.
Joby, I, I do, I, I think I recall that it was discussed that there had been some site in Carterville that had been located, we had not contracted with Carterville, but Carterville was mentioned as a possible.
As a possible option.
Had, had ever committed to it, but Carterville was mentioned.
It was mentioned as a possible second option because when the, the original dirt that, where it's coming from out of Nelson, we said that's just too far away, so we tried to get some closer and then we, really the only extra, closest, nearest place that was Carterville. After we talked to Northside and everybody else around here, who's moving any dirt? It was still more economical to go back to, to Nelson.
It's more economical to put a lining on it.
Yes, that's more, and all that's spelled out in Stan Tech's spreadsheets, they've got ladder this plus the vent, do the liner, you've got the vent system again, it's all spelled out in their, in their spreadsheet.
We have to do this, gentlemen, I think so. I mean, we need a motion to do it, we're going to do it. Now, motion in a second? Any other discussion? If not, those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, no? All members voting for the motion. Thank you, Joby.
You're welcome.
Item D, the action on return of five acres donated by Hickory Lot and Bluff LLC for public faith safety facility. Now, this event occurred before nine times, certainly before the rest of your times here and so, don't know all the details other than the, I guess Technology Park Atlanta, Bruce there gave five acres that was to be a site for a public safety facility. And it was found shortly thereafter, a year or two, it was unacceptable. I mean, you couldn't build on it. I mean, we got dirt problems, we got site problems, I mean, a little bit of everything here. But the, the condition within that deed was that if, if construction hadn't begun on it within five years, I guess it was by January 30th of 2008, that, that would revert back to the developer. And basically it's still on the tax records in the name of, of the city, so you know, we can't use it, we need, in my opinion, turn it back, deed it back to them, so it's back on the tax rolls for whatever amount that is.
Motion to return. Second.
Have a motion in a second. Any other discussions? If not, those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, no? All members voting for the motion. Action on planning commission recommendation of case CUR 1305-001, Community Baptist Church on Mountain District Boulevard.
Motion to approve.
Have a motion to approve, have a second.
Second.
Have a second, okay. Any other discussion or questions about it?
The concern that I have is that we have in the past three or four years voted on this similar situation in retail shopping centers for churches come in because we have vacancies. To me, retail shopping centers should be maintained as retail shopping centers, it's a good tax base for our city, but we have found more and more of these popping up, and I don't like to use the word popping up, but we have been coming up. And I feel that what we really need to do is think seriously about, every time we turn around, we have another one come in, they're all excellent reasons, but the other reason is this is retail, retail space and it shouldn't be maintained retail space. So that's my point of view. Thank you.
Mr. Cottrell, we've, we've heard both, we've heard two sides of this story, but there's one side that seems to be missing and that's the side of the landlord, the owner of the. of the property, his ability to generate income, and he's really paying the tax bill. And I don't know if any, if the owner has expressed any concern one way or the other, whether it's vacant or whether the church moves in there, but I would think that owner that's paying the tax bill would be happy to have it occupied. So if there was a demand for that retail space, would it not be currently occupied by retail? So I'm just throwing that out as something we haven't even thought of.
Anyone else for?
I would just compare with Mr. Cummins, and the owner makes the statement by renting the property to the church, so.
Yeah. Anyone else? Okay. All those in favor of the motion signify the saying aye?
Aye.
Those know?
No, no.
Okay, the motion carries three to two. I, I asked for a voice vote, I mean, in the angle vote. Mr. Cummins?
Yes.
Mr. Rush?
Yes.
Yes?
No.
Mr. Totten?
No.
Motion carries three to two.
Thank you.
Did you get all those sued?
Yes.
Okay. Discussion of the Hidden Valley Drive repairs. Mr. Wood, yes?
Well, I've asked our city engineer to, to provide some cost estimates for an adequate repair of that road, who I think it was suggested to what would be county standard, primary meaning exclusive of, of a curb and gutter. I have asked him to look at the width of the street to be sure that it meets whatever safety concerns or considerations we have, but he's in the process of developing that estimate information. We'll also try to have that prepared now for the next meeting.
Thank you.
Special point. The county said that they had in their plan or had offered fifty thousand. The road was referred to as three tenths of a mile. And on a cost factor that you would have passed out, one mile, two-lane road is approximately a hundred twenty-five thousand dollars. Three tenths of a mile should be thirty-seven point five. So...
Well, the problem there, Mr. Mayor Ford, is that, you know, they, they're looking at fixing that slope there.
Right.
So that, if you were just resurfacing, I think his numbers would, I think that'd probably be about right. But if you, if you're thinking about realigning the vertical realignment of that road so that it is a, a more gradual incline to Ash Street, then that, that has probably had quite a bit of cost to it.
Well, if we had another thirteen thousand, that would just get us up to the fifty. So it's something that we should go back and look at that again and see. Take some of that dirt that we can't use over in the landfill and haul it over and throw it down, probably squash out.
They got plenty of dirt down there where they built that system, and they brought dirt in, and now they're saying they can't use the dirt, so they can move it right up to the road.
Yeah. But if we have somebody that's offering us fifty thousand, we really need to capitalize on that.
I, I think, you know, I think if, if we could, if we talked to the county into bringing that road up to even county specs, you know, fixing, fixing those base layers and resurfacing in it and, and, and trying to improve on that alignment up to the Ash Street there, I think it would be, you know, I think it would be in our best interest then to take it over, in the best interest of those citizens that we have on, in Hidden Valley there. So I believe, I guess you'd be, Joby's going to be checking on that, and maybe, I would hope there would be some conversation between you and the county manager regarding that matter soon. Anyone else? Okay. Uh, there's no, you have, you have a report?
No, sir.
Okay. No council, Mr. Adams, I entertain a motion, good, sir?
I vote yes.
Back in, those in favor?